Alright, so as we get started tonight, I would like to inform everybody of some decorum for our meetings to keep them in smoothly and professionally and show respect for everybody's time. So if anyone here tonight would like to make a comment, please fill out one of the comment cards that Carrie has up here at the front. You have the option of addressing the council or having the clerk read your comment into the record during the meeting. If you are addressing a new item, please come up to the podium during the public comment period. And if you have a statement to make, please also note that public comments are limited to three minutes per person. To maintain decorum during the meetings, please do not speak from the audience. If you have a question or comments that arise during the course of the meeting, you can see our town manager after the meeting. For those presenting this evening, when your item arises, please come to the podium and state your name and affiliation prior to beginning. And we appreciate your cooperation and hope you enjoy the meeting. Alright, so our first item of business this evening, first of all, is the consent agenda. So that is the approval of the minutes from the November 12th meeting.
Motion approved the consent agenda. I had one piece of discussion, Mark sent in one change, and so we're good with the change?
We're good with that.
Okay.
Yep, just taking me off of calling the meeting to order?
Yes.
As that wasn't here, so.
So with the consideration that the amendment was made to the minutes with who called the meeting to order two weeks ago, I second motion.
I'll lose the favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And I will abstain since I wasn't here, so alrighty. Thanks for handling it for me last week, I appreciate the last meeting. Yep. Alright, public comments, are there any public comments? Again, they're limited to three minutes per person, and we won't be discussing items as they are not part of the agenda this evening, but any public comments? Okay. New business, so new business items. Is the presentation number one, twenty-two zero one nine dash nine oh, the presentation of the social media trends and improvements. And intern Jared Cohen's here to give our presentation on that, so welcome Jared. Thank you for all you've been doing and.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council, my name is Jared Cohen, I'm the Townhouse intern. I'm currently a senior at Liberty High School, following the law and legal services track to pursue a college education in public policy and political science. So since I started at the Townhouse in September, I've been working on analyzing our social media, how we interact with the community, and how that can benefit us as a town. So basically, I've really focused on our Twitter because I think our Twitter has really been underused. So for those of you don't know, Twitter has 300 million active monthly users. Over 1.3 billion accounts have been created since Twitter was founded. 550 million people have sent tweets since Twitter's founding. There's over 500 million tweets sent daily across the world. And so I started looking at our data in July 2017 and took it over a 26-month period up until August 2019. So the middle column is titled impressions. Impressions are basically how many times people look at our tweets, interact with our tweets, see it, see that somebody they follow has liked it, retweeted it. So it's basically any time anybody sees or does anything involving our tweets. And this is pretty self-explanatory, follower gain and loss each month. At the bottom is our mean and sample deviation. Mean is the average and sample standard deviation is how far a data point strays from the mean. So I collected it over 26 months using Twitter analytics, which is published by Twitter every month and updated every few days. And using that data, I was able to make predictions about how our social media would work over the next couple of months as well. So there's nothing super standing out here except for this subtraction of 21 followers in August of 2018, which I deemed significant. It's three, over three standard deviations away from the mean. And it's honestly, it's not super big, it's a small count, but in the scheme of things, it's considered significant. So we pretty much stay around 4,000 impressions a month and about gain of eight followers a month, which isn't bad for a small municipality, yes.
With that much of a standard deviation and objectively large number, do you have a hypothesis as to why?
It could be a multitude of things. We either perform really well each month or don't perform well each month. It really depends on how much we put out. As I'll state later, there was a period of time where our Twitter was inactive. It, for some reason, it's been connected to our Facebook, so everything we put on our Facebook used to go to our Twitter as well. But for some reason, in about April of this past year, it stopped for some reason. But last, about two weeks ago, I was able to reconnect it, so you'll see those numbers about to go back up as well. So that's part of the reason that there's a drop in numbers over the last couple of months here.
Did you compare the impression data with when we've had an acting town manager and when we've had a permanent town manager?
So it, the town manager, whatever, the data doesn't really fall when there's a town manager here. It's not, it's really how active Carrie really keeps the Twitter or the Facebook. So yeah, it's really, it's really pressure on Carrie, it doesn't.
It's all your fault, Carrie.
It doesn't really have much to do whether or not it was Frank, if it was Joe, if it was Aretha. It's more how much I post on it, how much Carrie posts on it, that's where you see the change in the data. So here's just a linear version of how it looks. It's kind of up and down, it looks bigger than it, in the scheme of things, really is because it's such a small number. If it was a larger set of data, it would, it would be straighter. It's, if for, like a city like the city of Baltimore, their Twitter probably, in my best guess, stays pretty much like this. But because we're such a small, we have such a small following, it's going to show more when it behaves differently. So the left is impressions and the right is follower gain. This dip is when we lost 21 followers in one month. But other than that, it stayed pretty much above zero, we've normally gained, not lost.
I was gonna start tweeting daily, but I thought it might not be.
So I've actually been told not to let you get a Twitter. I've been instructed by Carrie to advise you not to get a Twitter.
Oh, okay, good, alright. I thought that was prudent advice, actually, yeah.
So, yeah, that's probably, probably the best bet that you want to tweet every day.
Some of us might enjoy.
I would enjoy it too, but I don't know if the town needs to hear what you have to say every single day.
Darn it.
I'm sorry.
No, it's all good then, alright.
Alright.
Thank you for getting me in check there, Jared.
So I created, using, using all this data on this slide, I created what's called a linear regression model. And that basically takes all the data and it predicts over a certain amount of time how it's going to perform. So the numbers I'm about to put up are gonna, would be the Twitter. If I didn't touch any of it, if Carrie didn't touch any of it, if we just let it go over the next couple of months and just let it behave how it's behaved. So as you can see, it's dropped, it would drop. If we left it over the next year, this is only up to June 2020, a year from then, we'd be even lower. And soon enough, our presence on social media would be non-existent. Really, that's not super, super relevant, it's not like we're not going to post anything. But if we did, that's how it would look. And that's just how, that's just the graph of how that would look as well. It, it's just a pretty straight drop-down. However, luckily for us, I took over the Twitter from Carrie and I made it, made it better, and the Facebook better.
Is that before Carrie or like?
So this would be, this would be if Carrie kept doing what she was doing.
Oh, okay.
Which was nothing.
Right, right.
But, but.
How does it translate Facebook into Twitter? Like, I don't understand it because isn't Twitter limited on characters?
That's a different operation.
That's a whole.
Okay, so like.
It just happens if you set it up.
So, so we had it set up, so like, on, what we would post on Facebook, like the set number of characters would show up on Twitter, and then it would have a link to go to our Facebook to read the rest of what was ever on there. But for some reason, that got disconnected, I don't really know how, but it's set back up, so that's all that matters.
So maybe the Facebook numbers will come back up when we have the Twitter link.
So as I'll show later, our Facebook actually has only gone up.
Yeah.
Our Facebook actually does really, really well, which isn't a surprise, but I'm not, our Facebook actually, for a community this size, does very, very well.
Oh, good.
So this is how, how it's gone up, September, October, and this is as of about 12 o'clock today, I updated the number. It's only gone up. This number's low, but we still have got time left in November for it to go back up, and our followers have really gone up too. I predicted around this time that it would only be around the three mark. It went five, seven, and 10. So it's growing back, it's growing slow, but it's going up. So that's all, all that really matters. And then our Facebook, Facebook is thriving, right now we have about 2,500 likes on Facebook and about 2,600 followers. So we've got a lot of people interacting with it, not just people who live in town, but businesses and people who live in the surrounding area, people from other counties. So hundreds of people interact with our posts every time and use it as a form of communication with the town and with the council. A lot of the times, people post their questions instead of calling or emailing here, they post them on our Facebook posts and we're able to interact with them through that. And I would suggest if any of you, if there's something that you feel needs to be out very quickly or needs to be seen by the most people possible, our Facebook is the go-to for it. The most people see that, a lot of people see it quickly, and we know the times to post. People look at it on their lunch break and when they get home from work. That's, that's when we found our posts do the best. And so then I said, what can we do to the town, as a town, to improve our community outreach? So we need to start publicizing more on social media. We don't want to overload everybody with stuff on social media, but anything that we deem important should go on there. It's the quickest way, it's the fastest way, it's the best way, honestly, it's a changing time. We need to start interacting with our followers and our community more, that's how we get the word out. That's how we're gonna get the most people to know about important events. We need to promote our local businesses and activities. If we promote, they grow, and if they grow, everybody, everybody grows. That's the best way to help build our surrounding community. And we need to be more accessible to the community and interact with them online. Sometimes there's, people seem like there's a disconnect between people who live in town and here. As you can see, not a lot of people come to the meetings, not everybody knows what's happening on a day-to-day in the Townhouse, at the council. And social media is the way for people to know about that. Like I said before, the best way to reach a younger demographic is through social media. I'll be honest, not every 17-year-old is as interested in government as I am. But if people were more informed, I think that could change. I think if people understood what happened and had a better grasp on what was happening in the Townhouse, that you'll see more people joining.
Can I ask you a question about that previous slide?
Yeah, I got a question on that too.
Me too.
Okay.
Did you?
Not so fast.
This slide or the slide previous?
This one.
Okay.
Did you contemplate any of the how?
Any of the how?
Right, so interact with followers and community, how?
So it's kind of, it's honestly unrealistic for me to sit here and say that all of you should have the account for the Facebook and be posting on it and responding to everyone. But there's been a multitude of times where I've posted for council member link or I've been posting the videos. But that, that's the way we really, majority of the time, are interacting with the people in the community. We're taking comments that are left on our posts and questions and concerns, and we respond to them quickly. It's, sometimes it's hard to like get the quickest response when you're on the cell phone with somebody or writing an email. This way, it's a direct link, you don't have to go through the middleman. Well, I mean, I'm saying you don't have to go through the middleman, you guys would have to go through the middleman. But if there's. It's, it's a good way for any of you who want the community to know what you're doing and to have your name out there and see the positives that the council's doing, that, that's the best way, honestly, to do it. I know a lot of times it's a thankless job, but that, this is how you get thanked. And a lot of times, the community is thanking you guys on the Facebook. And I honestly think that by posting more on it and showing what you guys do behind the scenes, which I've been trying to do, that that's how the more recognition comes.
So I was gonna ask you, what is the recommended post for a town like us? Like what, like five a week or is there a recommendation?
So you don't, you don't want to oversaturate the community with posts, they're gonna, if you keep posting the same thing over and over again, they're gonna get tired of it. That's for any town. We've been posting, just, it, we haven't had like a set number, we've been kind of trying to figure out what works the best. Posting a video doesn't always mean more response. Posting a picture doesn't always mean more response. But finding the post that is going to get the most interaction from people and wording it in a way that most people are going to understand it, that's the kind of post that, that we're trying to post now. Trying to word things in a way where somebody who's 15 years old and somebody who's 75 years old is going to understand what we have to say and understand it in the simplest manner. So that's what we've been trying to do.
Alright, and is there, would there be a situation where you would post something on Facebook and not put it on Twitter or vice versa?
We've been trying to put, I mean, I'll be honest with you, sometimes we forget to, to post things on Twitter too. We have to post it on our Facebook and then post it on like a secondary Facebook to go through it, the Twitter. It, it's weird, it's complicated, it's annoying, but.
It used to be that whatever we put on the town Facebook page went directly to Twitter automatically. And then that's when that somehow got split in, you said August?
April.
April. And so Jared's workaround has been working, but it's been a bit cumbersome for us. So sometimes we forget, but in general, no, we would keep everything Twitter and Facebook just about the same.
I believe that's how it works for the police department.
Yes, it does. Everything that goes from the Sykesville Police Department Facebook also goes to the Twitter. And the Sykesville Police Department Facebook and Twitter performs very well as well, actually better than ours does, so props to you.
Is there, is there any metrics on crossover, like how many Facebook users and Twitter users are the same per sample? Or is there?
It's.
Is it just the?
Facebook is really, really bad at giving data.
Okay.
They're gonna capture it and.
Yes.
They're not gonna be giving it for free.
Yeah, right. Like Twitter, I can access it right on our Twitter page, there's a, there's a tab called Analytics, it gives me everything. It gives me even more than I present it to you. Facebook presents their analytics in a confusing way and doesn't give you hard numbers. It just gives you graphs that, that are so, so specific that they have almost no meaning.
Gotcha.
So for the, it's hard for me to answer that question.
Well, I mean, I was just wondering if there was like, hey, a standard data point somewhere, like some company did it, like this is, this is, you know, 60% of the Facebook and Twitter users are the same person, I just wanted to.
I would assume that there's probably some crossover. But the kind of person we're getting on Facebook is probably not the same kind of person we're getting on Twitter.
Okay.
We're generally on Facebook attracting an older crowd, people who are working and have kids. Twitter, you've got a lot of your business owners, a lot of, we're followed by some local politicians, state. That's where we're getting on Twitter, those are the hits we're getting on Twitter.
So my question is, so now that we've figured out how to reach the younger demographic, how do we reach the older demographic? The one, so what's the easiest way to get the older folks? And I'll throw myself into that mix.
Well, first you have to get in the cattle.
Yeah, you have to be on a senior level of Facebook.
So what I'm saying, so for instance, if I'm not on social media, how though, is there a way to get the message to them, some way through the internet? Because I don't think I've reached.
Well, if somebody, if somebody.
Right, but without a Facebook page, I mean, let's use this way.
That's social media, that's the definition of social media.
Unless we like did like a mass email. And if the person doesn't have Facebook, then I suspect they probably, you need an email to sign up for Facebook. So if they're not using the internet, then if using social media is not going to help them.
But what I'm saying is, so, so could you get it through Twitter, for instance, without having that? So in which case, then you need to make sure, right?
Can you get it through Twitter without having a Twitter account?
Look, yeah, let's say you're on, you're on Twitter and then you get this, this tweet, right?
Well, you can see.
And then it has a link to the Facebook page, will you still be able to see everything without having a Facebook account?
I mean, generally, I mean, possibly. Normally you need an account to, to interact on these things. I know if you search on Google, some accounts, you can, you can see most recent tweets, I don't know if that comes up with ours. That's normally for larger corporations and businesses. I'm sure there's a way that you can access that without making an account, but the easiest way would just to be making an account. It's not super difficult, you just need your email and your, and your birthday.
Oh, sure, it's not super difficult. I mean, we've seen all the stuff, like I'm, I'm very skeptical of Facebook because I think they're, they're, we don't know where this social experiment's gonna end.
Right.
Right now, so it's, and clearly they've been doing things that aren't legit. So it's just like, it worries me, like, yeah, just sign up and just, and all you need, it's, they're not going to collect everything about you. And so I'm just wondering, like, are, what do we do for the people that aren't connected? And how do we somehow get them to participate in social media without?
So I will say, for those people, we do have an email list that right now has a little over 600 people on it that we reach. Also, our newsletter still goes out to every household.
Right, right.
And so that's a great way to reach people about things that we know that are coming up within the next four months.
Yeah, no, I think you're right, I mean, I think you're definitely on to, this is the future.
This is the email system.
So how do we balance out the past with the future, is what I'm trying to figure out from.
I think now, it's, it's almost 2020. If someone now doesn't have a Facebook and they're older, they're not going to. I, I think a lot of people who at this point, Facebook's been around for almost 15 years, if not more, if they're not caught on to the social media, social networking thing, they're, at this point, I don't say they're a lost cause, but it's going to be hard to get them to catch on at this point. Especially with the stuff in the news now. So I think the best bet for those people, as Carrie said, using the email list and using the newsletter.
Well, I think in our emergency minute that we'll share now, I think we identified the need to get information out quickly to people. I think this is certainly a tool, definitely for the younger generation, that is very effective. I'm just trying to figure out now what gaps, what gaps are we going to expose when we don't? And then how do we fill, you know, how do we patch that up, you know? Because clearly the older folks aren't going to get the.
I think you might be surprised to learn how many persons aged 65.
Yeah, no, I know there's a lot.
Have a Facebook account and follow it frequently.
Yeah, no, you're probably right, I'm, because they're looking at grand, the grandkids.
No matter the reason.
Whatever, yeah.
I think it can't hurt if they're already on Facebook because of those types of reasons for us to send an email to those 600 people and offer a strong encouragement that we have a Facebook page and if you don't yet have a Facebook account, here's how you would sign up. If you do, please follow us and take advantage at least of those that have an account right now. It'd be just as easy for them to jump on our Facebook page and like us and, and all of a sudden be aware of our posts.
Right, so our, our Facebook really, it, it performs very well for the most part. We're getting a couple hundred to even sometimes a couple thousand views on, on our Facebook posts. Like, like for instance, a council meeting back in September when we honored the two formal council members, that was one of our biggest posts ever on the Facebook page. We got almost 2,000, 2,000 impressions on it, a ton of likes, a ton of comments. Like the, the police department gets a ton of interaction on their Facebook too. It, it honestly is, is the way of the future. And social media, there, there's a lot of downsides to it, and we, we don't know what's happening behind the scenes. But it, it's the way things are progressing, and that's the way a lot of places are going to start, are start moving.
Now, so then, one final question then as part of this is, so do we have any sense of how many citizens we're able to reach that are actual town residents on our social media? Like, I know you said like 26, 20, but we really know any way to track that at all?
It'd be hard to track that.
I'm worried to tell with their town resident.
Yeah.
I, I'm fairly certain that most of the people who interact with our Facebook are either town residents or live in Eldersburg. Most people who, who interact are, are from one of those two places. Because most people in Eldersburg don't know that Eldersburg's not part of Sykesville. So they just follow Sykesville and assume that everything that's there applies to them as well. So, well, I, I, it's my assumption that most fall into that, those two.
Okay, awesome, well, thanks for, for.
No worries.
Yep.
So.
Appreciate that, that's all I had, it's up to the.
Other than just doing all my number stuff, I've been doing a lot of other stuff here at the Townhouse as well. I come here every other day from around 11:30, 11:45 to about 2:30. So I've updated our social media accounts, I filmed, edited, and are, and posting the Municipal Works Month videos. Mark, did Marx go up today?
It did not.
Marx's should be going up in a couple days.
Yeah.
And I did one for Joe. I need to film one for you, and you haven't been here when I've been here.
Alright.
So we're gonna have to figure that out.
I'm gonna be here and I'll give my.
I did.
We gotta hurry up.
I did one for Jared, he called himself a ninja restaurant owner, he's pretty funny. So yeah, that's been a big month, big part of October, November, has been doing those. I've been scanning, for those of you, I'm sure you all know, we have the new, the new scanner system. I've spent two weeks non-stop scanning stuff, it's a real joy. I learned how to write minutes for meetings, though I'll admit, I'm really, really bad at it. I did not write those minutes, I was asked to and I didn't attempt to. It, yeah.
Carrie's a tough boss, man.
Yeah, I know. I made coffee for Jared. A few times, this one's for you, Mr. Mayor, I'm Carrie's extermination team. I kill all the bugs, a lot of bugs.
Just about five minutes before the meeting, he killed a stink bug for me.
Nice.
A lot of wasps. We have a wa, we kind of have a wasp problem, there's a lot of them.
That's like a prerequisite for this job.
Yeah, to be able to kill a bug.
Carrie's like, how are you at spider killing?
Killed, killed plenty of bugs while I've been here. I've, on an honest note, I've learned a lot of meaningful and valuable information that's going to help me in the future. And I've gotten hands-on experience that a lot of teenagers don't have the opportunity to experience. I've really learned, honestly, I learned a lot, as much as I hate scanning things. I've honestly learned a whole, whole lot from doing it. I got, got my hands on things that it's invaluable to look at. I read through stuff, just really took my time and soaked it all in. And I think honestly, one of the things I'll take away the most is, is that I really got to get a feel of what it's like to work in a municipal government. And so, that's kind of it, does anybody have any other questions?
I was wondering if we have any.
Yeah.
Until the end of January, January 27th is my last day.
No, he's counting down.
Not that I'm counting down.
Yeah, not that we're counting down.
But I will be here. I will be here for the holiday party. Just FYI, if you don't wear an ugly sweater, you're going to get shunned, better wear an ugly sweater.
On social media, we'll be getting shunned.
No, by me. It's vital.
Yeah, maybe.
Yeah, af- after this internship, I'll be going up to Westminster and I have an internship at the Carroll County Board of Elections.
And then you'll be running back to us.
Well, that won't be nearly as fascinating as this one, wouldn't it?
It'll be different, certainly very different.
So I have one question, you've done a lot of great, great thing here, this is wonderful. What is next for the next person that you work every day for?
For the next person who interns here.
Where are the next, the social media steps?
Where do we go, so I would.
At anything, not just social media, social media, you have a unique perspective. What do you see as a problem that someone in your position could help fix and should? And what would you say to the next guy or gal who takes your job?
Well, from, from my perspective, and something I had considered doing when I was thinking about a project to do for this semester, I personally think that there, in downtown Sykesville, there's kind of an age disconnect. I think there's either things to do for people over 21 who can, who can drink and party, do what they want, such as the craft beer festival, or there's things to do for families, there's not much to do in between that. I know there's sometimes the movies, and you can come to the, to the, to the harvest festivals and, and so on and so what. But other than that, there's not much to do. And I'd like to kind of figure out a way to bring not just families and not just people who are of age to drink and, but bring people who are kind of in the middle. but bring people who are kind of in the middle and and bring everybody together as Sykesville, not just Sykesville that can drink and Sykesville with young kids. If that makes sense.
Yeah, so are you gonna get into freelance and then you'll be able to come back and help us out for our social media work, you know? See, I thought that'd be a great role. But anyway, but thank you so much. Yeah, on behalf of myself and the entire council, I wanted to thank you for coming and and helping us with our social media and maybe putting us on track to do a better job with it and keep it going.
Thank you. I've really, really enjoyed my time here. It's definitely gonna be hard going to a different environment, a very, very different environment. I'm not even really allowed to have my phone on me there, let alone posting on Facebook all the time while I'm here. So.
There goes that intern.
It'll definitely be a chance.
Freelance work, we were gonna say. Yeah, yeah, right, right.
Yeah, well, I'm getting paid zero at both places, so.
Can Carrie, can Carrie still call you first? Underway, can you exterminate?
Yes, of course. Well, I appreciate all of you for letting me do my thing and and for being so welcoming while I've been here. And I hope you all have a wonderful rest of your year and try to get along without me when I leave.
It'll be hard.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, yeah. Alrighty, next item of business this evening. Is the uh two zero one nine dash nine one, and this is to consider and discuss and act on the Warfield Wetlands Mitigation Construction Agreement. I guess if everybody was able to take a look at this stuff, you probably didn't have a whole lot of clarity on what all this means. It's pretty challenging, but did you wanna get to this or?
Yeah, I can go through it real quick. Again, I tried to provide at least some information there in the packet for everybody as as the report uh that that was included says this is kind of a continuation of an approval that was done back in April of uh two thousand eighteen. I guess part of the Warfield project, uh I believe it's on parcels A and B, which is towards the front of uh front of the overall development. Uh there is some, I'm sorry?
Part of C.
And part of C. Um there are some existing wetlands there that will need to be filled in so that those parcels can become marketable for commercial and retail use. Uh so as in response to that, they are proposing that additional wetlands are being built kind of toward the back of the property on uh what's designated as parkland uh for the town. So again, what's before you tonight is actually the construction agreement, um the covenants and restrictions that are gonna be on the property, uh the maintenance plan and I guess access for the property. Uh so again, there's a lot of information in your packet. Again, the uh the uh our attorney has kind of gone through all of those agreements or actually drafted all those agreements for everybody um to start reviewing. We've been in pretty constant communication with the development team um on this. Uh they're they're anxious obviously to get going. Uh I don't believe construction can start until April. Uh there is some limitation on when you can actually construct these things. I think it has something to do with uh migration patterns or something along those lines. Uh but again, we wanted to get in front of you so we can restart this conversation and and get any questions that you all may have answered and then uh hopefully on to the construction phase.
And the the developer wants to have the documentation signed uh still this fall uh so that uh they can move forward immediately in a spring. So then this is will be an action item at some point in the near future, probably after the next meeting.
So any questions from anybody else?
So I I have a question. I guess uh throughout the the document, it specifically says that there's any deviation from the work uh that has been approved by the State of Maryland and Corps of Engineers. What would be the reason that they would have to deviate from what has been signed off and studied by the Army of Engineers?
Well, the 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 point is if they if they discover somewhat foreseen circumstances, you know, as they're as they're in the ground, uh they might have to change the plans and they'd have to go back and redraw and and get, you know, approvals. The the general overall view is they're mitigating a wetlands feature that exists on what is potentially usable, developable land and moving it into the parkland. And we're getting a ta- an amenity back in exchange for that because they're building bridges and walkways and pathways and doing plantings, all of which are in wetlands areas that have to be. And so so that's being overseen by the Corps of Engineers and the Department of Fire, uh Maryland, Department of Engineering. And we are uh kind of piggybacking off of that. We're not providing the expertise to make sure that those specific components are done like the uh the Corps is going to inspect, approve and require maintenance of those components with the exception of the two bridges and an asphalt paved area outside of uh outside of the existing pond. So uh so it would be a two-sentence balance, one to the Corps, one to us. And uh we just wanna make sure that the mitigation is complete, the bills are paid. Uh it's done in accordance with approved plans and specs. And at the end of the day, uh and it's only a two-month project. Uh and at the end of the day, we get the amenity that we think we're getting based on those plans and specs. That's the general study.
So if there is any change, they would have to go back to the uh.
Corps.
Corps, okay. Any other questions?
So a couple other questions. Uh there's a picture of, I think, a bridge. Um is this the proposed bridge for those couple of locations where a bridge would go in?
That is what they're proposing.
So this is not the entire walkway, the rest of the walkway will remain asphalt?
Correct.
And then just this will go in for those bridges?
That's right.
And then?
I was gonna say, the reason there's not a specific spec for the bridge included in the plans is it does have to be field verified. So after they actually start the construction, that's when they'll figure out exactly the length of the bridge and and all that. It does have to comply with uh some of the uh agreements that we've already made, which is, you know, we have to have our our maintenance vehicles have to be able to cross it and um.
Right, the staging area. So I saw that in here, the access and then the staging area, right, for the whole site?
Right, well, yeah, that's separate from the bridges, but the um the the I guess the the plan that was put together was done before parcels E and F were under development. So obviously there's townhomes there that's already been graded. Um so again, that would have to be something that they have to submit to the town to show us exactly how they're gonna be accessing the site and where that staging area is gonna be before they start construction. Uh because again, they they will be deviating from the plan uh at least on those two tow- two items.
Well, the staging area is actually supposed to be attached as an exhibit to the uh to the agreement, so to the construction agreement. And if they wanna change it after that, uh then uh they would have to come back to us and ask permission. That's been a topic of discussion uh as recent as this weekend, which is show us where you think the staging area is going to be and uh so that we, because it impacts our citizens' use or may impact our citizens' use of the parkland. And so tell us now so we can have that factor that into our decision-making in terms of whether we agree or not agree to where the staging area should be lo- located. I I think we as the property owner and a a good steward of town park need to make sure that that amenity is not unduly interrupted. The use of that amenity is not unduly interrupted uh by virtue of this project.
So again, I think the idea is still to have that staging area and access through parcels E and F. But again, they have to figure that out before they.
Yeah, they're still trying to figure out where to put it.
So in the construction of the first uh few, I don't know how many are over there right now, the few townhomes, there was some runoff that we were experiencing along one part of that trail. Um will this, do we know if this will mitigate that issue by having this wetland area installed? Or is that unknown?
I I I don't know. Uh I don't think.
Yeah, if I. Cause that, cause it's, cause it is, a good portion of last summer into, I think it was last, this past summer maybe. I don't remember the exact timeframe. That was uh, you know, that orange uh, I don't know, fencing, plastic fencing or whatever that said. You can't go over uh that particular area. And it just, it seemed like a lot of runoff was happening based on what they were doing, yeah.
Well, I I suggest that's the town manager's responsibility to go down there, take a look at it and see if, see if it's uh in compliant with the current.
Right.
Grading plays. That sounds more like a grade of a current plan issue, whether there's adherence or whether uh and if there's an true runoff problem with with uh erosion problem, uh then that's something that should be addressed.
So so again, it this, the the wetlands mitigation isn't gonna resolve any potential runoff issues on parcels E and F or where the townhouse development is going. If there are issues with runoff there, that is something we can address separately.
And then does the county do inspections on that too? Like is that strictly the for the town? Because I think the county does inspections for.
County.
For silt and and runoff too. So we should be getting that. But Mark has been pretty familiar with the project too, so maybe we can have him investigate a little bit in that.
We have a third-party engineer that does the.
Yeah.
We do have a third-party engineer that does those, some of those inspections. I know the county handles most of the the building inspections. Uh I'm not sure if they're.
Well, I know we're building, if you do runoff, they're not gonna just like, oh, that's wrong.
We're aware of something as significant, you know, like they're not, inspectors aren't there all the time.
Sure.
Yeah, bring it to our attention. I mean, we can put it on Mark's radar and then follow up with it and see if it's something else that needs to be investigated further. But there's gonna be some of that which may or may not impact the actual project. I mean, as a rule, my question is, I guess um for um maintenance access long-term, would that be like the same place where they're doing the staging and getting access now? For like, how are we gonna get our equipment back there? Because we're gonna have to maintain this right after five years?
Yeah, it's an extra long maintenance period.
Yeah.
Geeed into the Corps of Engineers requirement for maintenance. But again, this is a passive, if you will, it's kind of a passive rec area.
Okay.
It's just plantings of of materials that grow and, you know.
So there shouldn't be equipment necessary to get in there much?
Other than potentially a lawnmower on the other side of the wetlands, not so much.
Okay.
Within the wetlands, there's not gonna be much of anything.
All right.
Unless there's a problem. But again, that's why there's such a long maintenance period uh leading up to that. Just to make sure that it actually takes the way that it's designed.
They're not gonna require us to dredge the pond.
Yeah, that's what I'm, stuff like that. That's what I was worried about.
There shouldn't be any of that because again, you're not talking about sedimentation control anywhere on here. This is simply, you know, a.
This is a meandering stream that's being built with pl- with with uh plantings around it to get and then and then a pathway through it.
Okay.
So uh the maintenance would be more the pathway than anything else.
Nice.
So then the last question I had was in reference to the planning commission. I saw the last time they looked at this was in April of eighteen. There's also some notes that said something along the lines of um that there's been, you know, a lot of discussions that have happened since then. And then it said that the this plan has not gone back to the planning commission. Is there any reason why it hasn't gone back to the planning commission?
Yeah, because it was approved, well, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I was just gonna say, the plant itself hasn't changed at all. At least the wetlands mitigation part hasn't changed at all.
It's been processed, we we've taken a look at it, it's been processed through the Corps. It's taken out low with the Corps, but.
Got it. Just wanted to understand.
Sure.
Right. And so I guess the only other thing is we follow the staff recommendations and make sure that these things get dealt with, these couple of points to get dealt with before it comes back for the final approval. And I think everybody should be all right, right?
Well, I mean, you can't abridge condition on those things, but again, if we just wanna keep the conversation going, so you guys run the speed, that's fine.
Yeah, so how do you feel about that? Do you wanna wait and make sure all this gets dealt with? Yeah.
I prefer that.
Yep, I I tend to agree with that too, just based on some of the challenges, yeah. Okay, all right. So yeah, I think if they get addressed, we should be okay, but let's get them addressed and then we'll bring it back. And maybe if we can get it all worked out for the December meeting maybe, but if not, I mean, I think they're trying to hit that December meeting so they can get moving, right?
So these, I I thought that these items would not be finished by that time, the surety access and staging?
Yeah. Will that be worked out, you think?
My my recommendation to them on the staging is tell us where you think it'll go now and then come back if it's ch- it changes and ask the council to relocate. Uh but if you want us to sign a document now, tell us where it is uh with regard to the to the surety. Uh they they've replaced the amount and staff has looked at it and said their amounts are adequate or sufficient to for uh for the bonds. We know how much the bonds are gonna be posted with the Corps. We know what they're gonna post with us, so if they, so it's really the shape of the surety, whether it's gonna be a surety bond, a a letter of credit. Uh but that's up to them to decide. And what was the third?
Access.
Access, so again, that access for the timber.
Since they've already graded it off, yeah, how are they gonna get access back there? So those are the three items.
Yeah, I'll I'll leave that one up to Joe. I don't, uh it's up to the top of the discussion.
So that would be all those things that are, we'd be further along in just a couple of weeks, we think?
With, well, I I would think so.
No, they can't start work without, so the documents are, so you, so so they could be signed now, but they can't start work until they post the bond. We will know where the uh staging area is. And the access issue, again, I'll leave to Joe to figure out how we resolve it so that the documents are sufficient.
But that's a motivate them if they wanna get it done by the ninth meeting.
Correct. I I don't think any of these issues are are gonna be.
Insecure.
Drag into.
Okay.
Into early next year. I would think we can get answers to all of these questions pretty quick.
All right, great. All right, well, I think that's good then. If we can get all that worked out, we can do it in December. Um if not, then maybe January, but I know they wanna get moving. Yeah, it's good stuff, right? All right, so our announcements, I hope I don't screw this up, right? So um because we got a couple of additions here for our merchants. There you go, November thirtieth is Small Business Saturday. So please come on down and support our small businesses here in town. Um and they're gonna have a small shop small passport, so you can pick up one of those participating businesses. And that's running from November thirtieth to December eighth. So we're hoping you do that. And again, uh you can get the coolest stuff, so start with all your gifts here on Main Street first. And then whatever you can't find, you can, you know, try to find somewhere else. But start, start in town and you'll be surprised.
There may be a giveaway with the passports as well.
Ah, so you might even hit a surprise giveaway with the passport, so there you go, you just got the insider tip. December sixth is also the twelve hours of Christmas in downtown Sykesville, so that's another fun event with lots of savings and and fun stuff.
It's a Friday evening.
Yep, and it's a Friday evening. Uh December tenth is the Christmas decorating contest that the uh mayor and town council is doing. So we're gonna do ten residential homes this year. So get all your decorations out by the tenth, and then we're gonna do two businesses, which we haven't never done before. So adding two of, I think we should stick to maybe Main Street businesses, so um but um so.
We'll make sure Jared gives us a tweet now.
Yeah, right. Get that out, right. That'll be a big one, trust me, Jared, gets a lot of followers on that.
Downtown businesses instead of Main Street.
Downtown businesses, let's call it that, yeah. Because we're, the only reason I say that is because we have trouble finding every little nook and cranny and we don't wanna get in trouble by missing somebody that had fantastic decorations, yeah. All right, and then um so we got those. Due to the Thanksgiving holiday, um recycling will not be picked up on November twenty eighth. It will be picked up instead on Monday, December second, and then as regularly scheduled after that. Um the next mayor and town council meeting is Monday, December ninth, and there is only gonna be one meeting as always in December. Uh we have volunteer opportunities available on the Historic District Commission, the BZA, Spark, Police Auxiliary, and we're still in need of a crossing guard. And you can email carryatown@sykesville.net for more information um on all those opportunities as well. And then our next thing is our staff updates. So do you wanna start with staff updates first and then we'll do the?
I was gonna save mine for the close session.
Okay, and then so public safety report. Chief, you're up.
Good evening, everyone. Chief Spohley. I know you probably didn't recognize me with, you know, my facial hair, you know. It's for a good cause, no shame November.
Oh, hey, chief.
Yeah, same. Uh you've probably seen some of the officers have very good beards and it's all for cancer research. So we're winding down here the last couple of days, so you'll you'll see a bunch of clean-shaven officers here very shortly, I promise you. Again, for a good cause. We're talking about uh the public safety report covering the period November fourth through the seventeenth. Just highlight a few things here for you. Uh during that timeframe, we had nine assist other agency, only two community policing initiatives. That's something we need to work on for next, next period. Uh fourteen incident reports, which you'll find in your in your packet. Um one hundred and eighteen patrol checks, twenty-nine in traffic enforcement initiatives for a total of two hundred and eighty-six events during that that period. Any questions about any of the incident reports or assist other agency or community policing events that we concluded in your packet?
I don't exist as a damage in the first. There was a break in.
Which one are you referring to, sir?
Uh let's see, well, first one was oh two four seven and then.
Oh, the uh the stone building?
Yeah, I mean.
There was some damage there, yes, some doors, some plywood had been removed. I think the total was um around twelve hundred estimated damage. And we did notify Howard County as per our agreement with them anytime we investigate an incident there in the park. And we did notify Howard County as per our agreement with them anytime we investigate an incident there in the park. Uh, since Howard County Park, we're required to notify Howard County Police Department, uh, which, which we did, so.
Well, I'm new to the council, but it didn't seem like we've had, you know, it didn't seem like this is fortunately the first time we've had this.
To my, to my knowledge, it is the first time. I mean, I was, I was surprised.
Thank you.
So I don't have any specific questions with respect to the report, chief. I just wanted to, um, I guess, make a public comment with respect to the graffiti artist that seems to be, um, gaining some confidence in his artwork lately. And, um, and how disappointing it is to see that, that anyone is that bored, um, to disrespect the public property here in town as he or she has been doing. Um-
I understand you found the, you saw the graffiti in the tunnel.
Yes.
And there was a, I guess, a lapse there when, when we, we handled the report and when, uh, either Public Works or actually Mark was, was asked to remove that. And I think he started to remove some of the, the graffiti, but didn't, didn't finish it. So, uh, Derek and I will work on ensuring that, that, that is removed in a more timely manner.
Appreciate that.
Cause yeah, once, that's something you want to take down, especially when it's insensitive.
Yes, and I'd actually love to have a camera in that tunnel, um, for many reasons. Um, I'd like to think that it wouldn't necessarily be because there's some, um, you know, spray painting the inside of it. But I think from the safety perspective, it might be something we should consider from a staff perspective, introducing to the staff and maybe having them, um, talk more about that.
I think that's something we definitely need to look into, cause I was even thinking of the, really, the post office is an ideal spot to have like some, cause we have the infrastructure there to immediately, like a camera there. And this is not the first time we've had issues at those bathrooms either, so.
No. I mean, you're going to have that type of thing in any public restroom. I mean-
So I don't know how you, but maybe if you can narrow it down to a timeframe window, then you can, you know, you can maybe find the people that are, I don't know, you know, the, like if it's checked, cause we check those a lot too. The officers check them. So it's like, well, we checked it here and then there's only four people that came in. I mean, it's one of these four. I mean, it may help with investigations on those kind of damaged things. But again, I think there's, we need to look at some opportunities of how we move into the society of, like you're saying, with social media, all the technology. Where is the balance between some monitoring and, cause I think we're just sort of missing that. To your point, I think, you know, there's some, there's some opportunities where we should be doing that.
Yeah, well, you know that we also had, um, similar graffiti at some of the buildings in Warfield.
Mm-hmm.
And while I'm happy to report that just last week, I met with Steve McLeef out there, myself and Jason Kurtner, uh, at their request to review their plans for enhanced lighting and security cameras. So that is a step in the right direction, one that's been long coming, quite honestly. Uh, but that will help with respect to, to that area. But I mean, the question to your point is, um, you can't have cameras everywhere. Um, it's just a matter of, of identifying those areas that are, you know, prone to, to having graffiti or other types of damage.
Sometimes the artist is traveling, see? Maybe traveling from Warfield, you know, they travel like, so maybe they're-
Well, no, I, I mean-
Could be the same artist.
I actually believe in it is. If, if you look at the artwork, it's very similar, yeah.
Could very well be the same. There are some similarities. There are some similarities.
Um, so, but again, with the tunnel, absent this graffiti, it might be the reason why we're talking about it now.
Sure, I'm with you.
But I, I think that the tunnel is probably from a safety perspective, something that could benefit from some supervision electronically.
True. And I would just say, since we are being televised, I would ask that, you know, anyone that has any knowledge about any of these graffiti incidents, please give us a call. They can do so anonymously. Uh, parents, if you know that your kids are out wandering around the streets with spray paint cans, um, please take corrective action, number one, and then call us. I mean, it would be nice to put a stop to it, but, um, yeah. We're doing, doing what we can, but with limited resources, uh, limited evidence to collect, uh, you almost have to catch these people in the act. And it's very challenging, very challenging.
And again, I guess if people see anything suspicious to, you know, saying they're, you know, right?
We always want them to call.
See something, say something, right, when it comes to paint?
Absolutely. And it can be done anonymously. You don't have to give your name, just a tip, we will certainly act on and try to, uh, catch the culprits responsible.
Okay.
The only other thing I would mention is I do have an, uh, an after-action review meeting with the folks from Carroll County Emergency Management coming up, uh, this Wednesday. So we haven't forgotten about it. We did promise we would conduct an after-action review along with a list of, uh, correct, corrective items. So, um, we're on it. We're, I'll hopefully be able to share that with you after we have our meeting.
All right, great. All right, any other questions?
Thanks, chief.
Oh, and excellent presentation. Uh, one thing I did want to mention about that, Carrie can relate to this. Um, the, the challenges with Facebook is, is being able to, to monitor it twenty-four seven. Uh, just this past weekend, um, I had a person, a resident, uh, message me on Facebook. If you're familiar with Facebook, you can send a message to our police department Facebook page about a, um, basically a viral video, which depicted a child being abused. You know, if I had not have looked at my Facebook and, and saw that, I would not have been able to respond to that person um, until, you know, several days later. And that's not the kind of response that, that we want to be able to give our customers. But on the other hand, it makes it very challenging for us to, we can't, uh, be on Facebook twenty-four seven and respond to every, every tweet or post that, that is made.
There's a way to set up, maybe you could speak to this just real quick. I could be completely off-base, but I used to have my own small business and a business page I could do this with and have an automatic response set up to a messenger message sent to, perhaps it could be done this way for both the towns and, uh, the police Facebook page, where it would automatically say, if this is of urgent or emergency matter of any kind, please take these following actions. We'll, you know, this isn't continuously monitored, something to that effect, just so that there is a response and it's that, hey, nobody might see this for as quickly as you hope. I don't know, something to that effect.
Okay.
I believe, yes. Uh, definitely something we can look into doing. Um, I think that would benefit both the town and the police department. Um, so I'm back in on Wednesdays.
Excellent. We appreciate that. Yeah. Isn't that stuff that you have in your info or about section?
It does. It will pop up actually on my personal Facebook, uh, for the notifications. But again, I'm not on it twenty-four seven, you know, and it's, then it's a matter of, of having to respond to someone, you know, and it's, certainly comes with the territory for, for me and my position. But it, it is a challenge to be able to monitor that and respond in, in, in real time to everyone's, um, posts. But, you know, it's a handy tool to have and we certainly, uh, I think use ours pretty, pretty adequately and, uh, you know, we continue to do so. Good, good, excellent presentation. Anything more for me?
Staff updates then? Did you want to wait until council committees? You'll do last?
Yeah.
Closed session, he's saying.
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you. Got it. So we'll start then here in Spark.
Sure, okay. With Spark, uh, Sykesville Parks and Rec Committee update, um, forthcoming here. So, uh, basically we decided, uh, with some confusion during my last report about when the November meeting would be rescheduled, um, Spark meets every fourth Thursday of the month and, um, Thanksgiving always falls on the last Thursday of the month. So there's usually only four, but there can be five Thursdays in November. So when there are only four, which is usually the case, um, November Spark meeting will be on the third Thursday of the month. Um, when there are five Thursdays, it will fall, um, on the fourth Thursday as usual, because Thanksgiving will be on the fifth. And that's clear as mud for everyone, so let's move on. Um, at least it's been established for the committee, so they know. Um, but I wanted to make that public announcement. Um, meetings are held January through November only, as there is no December Spark meeting annually. Okay. Um, so that's some housekeeping stuff. Um, our next meeting is January twenty-third. Um, and regarding the event that Spark is participating in on Saturday, December seventh, it's Santa's Arrival, which is a Downtown Sexual Connection sponsored event. Um, however, uh, Spark will, Sparks will have a craft table, a, a craft for children to, to participate in. The table and tent will be set up behind Transport Junction on the sidewalk fronting Oklahoma Road, which will be closed to traffic from there, um, from, from Main Street and, and beyond there to, um, visit. I assume to Baldwin Drive, it will be closed in that section. Um, so you should stop by if you're, uh, excited about, about the craft and/or want to have pictures taken with the Spark, um, characters. We've got, um, the Grinch, we've got, um, a couple of elves. And, um, we also have, um, Frosty the Snowman. So please stop by for photos. And that will be going on from five to eight on Saturday, December seventh. Stacy, will Sparky be present? It all depends if, it all depends if Sparky's, um, robed in something else or not. But, um, Sparky should be there.
He may have a hat.
Yes. It may be Sparky all souped up with a Santa hat. But yes, hopefully he will be there.
All right.
There has not been a meeting since. We already had our monthly meeting that won't be one for December, so I have nothing to add.
And that's the planning commission.
Planning commission.
For, uh, Main Street, um, tying into what Stacy said, we've got on December seventh, Mary Main Street from twelve to four. And then the Santa arrival and Christmas tree lighting on Main Street begins at five P M. It runs until eight P M. Um, also with regard to, um, holiday events, I would like to thank everybody on the council who donated to the Sykesville Happy Fun. I know several of you have, and I really appreciate that. Um, it's going to go toward helping a lot of underprivileged families in this area. I really appreciate that, Chris. Uh, we had our board meeting in November. We ironically talked about our social media and communication policy. That was one of our topics. Um, also board recruitment, our conflict of interest policy. Um, and we also discussed the acre space presentation and how we can help with that as that progresses. Design committee is planning the app of a self-guided tour of the Snallygaster murals. Organization committee is working on volunteer appreciation. Green committee is working on the Keep Maryland Beautiful designation and the, um, Smart Benches Grant, which doesn't require any matching funds, but it's, um, solar-powered benches for, you know, recharging your phones and things.
And hot swaps too, I think.
Yep, yep. I have to work on hot swaps. Promotion committee is working with the, um, Sykesville Police for a special difference fundraiser. And also talking about a possible to call for that for next year.
Wow, awesome. Uh, merchants haven't met. They're not meeting in November because it's Black Friday. Uh, next one is December twenty-seventh.
Okay, and, um, so at the Colored Schoolhouse, we had a wonderful event Sunday with Warren Dorsey's ninety-ninth birthday. So it was well-attended. The place was packed. So, um, it was a fun time. And he had his, uh, coconut cake that he always gets every year. So, but it was a lot of fun. So, uh, and I did talk to Pat about, you know, coordinating some of our efforts together with all of our resources. I think we had some discussions, myself and Joe as well. We're trying to better connect our stuff together, including the gatehouse. So, um, we've been working with, um, Jack to come up with a, a plan. He wants to expand some of the hours there. And so we're working to try to maybe come up with some ideas on management of the, um, museum, just so it can go long-term without, you know, one person leaving and then the whole thing shutting down again. Cause that's kind of what we've done in the past where, so we're trying to get a legacy system built up there. And, um, he's come up with a proposal that we're just, just got. So we're going to start reviewing that. And again, looking at opportunities to connect all of our stuff together. Um, and I think that's it. I don't think there's any, uh, events coming up there that I'm aware of. So that's it. But she's hosting the Homework Club there, which is really exciting. That's every, um, twice, twice a week. So a, a lot of the kids wear Warren's, um, thing and it's just, it's pretty cool, the Homework Club. So if you want to learn more about that, you can email Pat and get involved. So that's all I got.
Historic District Commission met Tuesday, the nineteenth plus Tuesday. We only had one application. We approved Warfield Development's plan for, um, building after landscaping. And we built, um, approved replacement of the windows with, um, a continu-, um, contingency that they have to supply us with a copy or a sample of the window to make sure that it's in compliance. Um, the next meeting, if we have one, if there's an application presented, would be on Tuesday, December seventeen, uh, here at the townhouse at seven o'clock. That's it.
Um, so there was no Raincliff Homeowners Association meeting. Uh, the next meeting will happen, um, in January. It'll be their annual meeting. Um, still waiting on an actual date for that. Uh, in reference to, uh, MML activities, Carrie had sent out a note to the council members, just as a reminder, uh, your RSVPs are due today. Uh, this is for the legislative, uh, meeting that happens on December twelfth at six-thirty in Tonny Town at the American Legion. And then there's no discussions happening right now for the Maryland Municipal League Legislative Committee. Uh, that'll start up again in earnest in January and February. Thanks.
Thank you. Anything else?
No, sir. Thank you.
All right. Yep. All right, so, um, there being nothing else for open session, uh, the meeting is proposed to be closed pursuant to the general provisions of the Annotated Code of Maryland, Section three dash three oh-five B, one, to discuss the appointment, employment, assignment, promotion, discipline, demotion, compensation, removal, resignation, or performance evaluation of appointees, employees, or officials over whom it has jurisdiction, or any other personnel matter that affects one or more specific individuals. So tonight, uh, the personnel, uh, item will be the treasurer's position and confidential personnel information.
Motion for a five-minute recess?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay. It might need to be ten, because we got to let the CMC get their equipment out, so. Thank you.